Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, December 12, 2022 at 6:00 PM, and I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. First, the agenda I have today is a public hearing at 6:00 PM. I will open the public hearing. I'm going to read the post. The Free Town Board of Selectmen, in conjunction with the Board of Assessors, will conduct a public hearing relative to selection of a residential factor that will determine the percentage of the tax burden to be borne by each class of property for fiscal year 2023. The hearing will be conducted at the Council on Agents, lower level, 227 Chase Road, Eastbound Mass. 02702, on Monday, November 28, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Meeting information and further agenda information will be posted before the close of business on November 22, 2022 PM. This hearing was then moved to 11/28/2022, sorry, from 11/28/2022 to 12/5/2022, and then subsequently moved to today, which is 12/12/2022. So with that, so the public hearing is now open. Hello, we're assessors. How are you? Do you guys have to open the meeting or anything?
Yeah, Jeff, you could call a meeting to order because you have one posted.
I'm sure I'll call to order the Board of Assessors meeting for the town of Free Town today, December 12, 2022, at 6:00 PM.
All right, great.
Welcome, guys.
We have handouts. They're coming, I promise.
I was looking like a packet.
Yes. Who knew that they pay with train tracks when it's snowing? I think... I printed some of these things out. I wasn't sure that everybody was going to be there, so it might be one shift. I think what I have right here is one each. So what is before you tonight's selectmen is... You've lived through this some times before. So you have to choose the residential factor that determines how much of the tax burden is borne by residential property and how much is borne by commercial property. It's a little bit different. Last year, your chart had 10 options. This year, your chart has 61 options. Yeah, I know. Merry Christmas. That's because we were a little bit surprised. This year, in the past couple of years, the maximum shift that we were allowed was 1.5. This year, the magic Department of Revenue computer says that it is 1.75, which doesn't sound like it should be that big of a deal, but it comes with 50 more options than you had last year. So if you look, this will be the larger chart out of all of this. The highlighted line that's in that chart, and I know the font's a little bit small, that is the shift that you selected last year. That was the shift of 1.47. If you were to go with that shift, and it's actually, it's the second column, the residential factor is the number that you're actually voting on. But each residential factor has a shift, and the shift makes a little bit more sense. So you can follow that chart across. These numbers are all roughly estimated numbers. So if you stated a 1.47 shift, the estimate is that the residential tax rate, which right now is 1206, would drop to 1114. The commercial, industrial, and personal property rate, which is 2056, would drop to 1878. In the current year, the average residential tax bill is about 4,800. At that same shift, it would increase to 5,200. It would go up about $450. And the commercial bills averaged this year was 12,216, and the coming year would drop to 11,780. And the commercial bills would drop by 435 a year. So I know that was something you guys were interested in last year. There are a number of scenarios where the commercial bills drop while the residential bills increase. And then, when you get down to a shift of... Looks like 1.525 is the first time you see an increase in commercial bills. The commercial bills would go up $3.37, while the residential bills would go up on average $360. As the shift gets higher, as you get closer to that 1.75, the commercial bills go up and the residential bills come down. There are numerous scenarios where the commercial bills are reduced below their average from this year. There is only one. The very bottom option is the only one where the residential bills actually get smaller. Other than that, they go up as low as 60 cents or as much as $483.63. There's an awful lot of numbers to throw at you all at once, I know.
Thanks, guys.
Take deep breaths.
So... Do you feel we get too much further? Oh, this chair. So, I'm Mike Motta, by the way. Member Jeff Fields, the Chair. I'll say that's another member. And I just wanted to point out, I know you all know this, but some people watching at home might not be aware that the tax bill that's ultimately sent is not something that the assessors have any control over.
That's true.
Nor does the Silicon Valley directly have any control over it. The bills actually are a result of the budget itself. That is not something that the Board of Assessors has any input into. What we do is every year, we start from scratch on January 1st, and we recalculate all the assessments of all the properties in town. And we come up with the total assessments, which are the numbers that we have here. While we're doing that, the city... I'm sorry, the town's Finest Department comes up with a budget and calculates what that's going to be, and then take those two numbers and divide them out, and you end up with a tax rate. So when the assessments go up, the tax rate would go down for a given amount of money spent. So when bills go up, bills go up because the spending goes up, not because the assessment goes up. So just want to make that clear. And I have a ton of data here. If there's any kind of questions, I'm sure you'll come up with one that I don't have information on. We can give it a stab. These numbers on the chart, as Mike has definitely explained, what the purpose... And I said there were three pieces of it. So the assessment is one piece, the budget is a second piece, the third piece is what you're going to decide tonight, which is the shift. And that is shifting the burden from residential onto more commercial. And so that's what all these numbers are for. The maximum, obviously, once you hit the maximum, the only thing you could do in future years is go down. When you go down, the residential values go up. So that's part of the consideration that you might have. I think that covered everything that I was thinking of.
Definitely important to point out. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
A lot of good information. I appreciate this, too, like the tax shift stuff, these, you know, quick little snippets where we do that.
What did come up when the assessors met this afternoon? One of the things that came up is why... Last year, you had 10 options, roughly 10 options, and it was roughly even that in some cases the... About half the time, the commercial bills were going to go down, and half the time, they're going to go up. And this year, it's very disparate. We've just gone through, we've just finished in the last week or so, the every-five-year recertification of values. The Department of Revenue takes a fine-tooth comb through everything. One of the results of our normal revaluation work plus that work was that the residential values in town went up about, on average, 18%. The commercial values, on average, went up about 6%. Market value, market activity plays a lot into that. We've had an awful lot of very high home sales. Homes that you would never expect to sell for what they're selling for are selling for what they're selling for. We haven't had an awful lot of commercial sale activity because it's not often that Stop &amp; Shop or Amazon or Copart is going up for sale. But we have... And this is certainly not enough on them. We have neighborhoods that are traditionally summer home neighborhoods that are converted. A number of us living in some of those.
A lot of company included.
Yes. Those are not neighborhoods where anybody ever at any time expected houses would be selling for or assessing for over a million dollars, and they're starting to now. It's just what the market is doing. Yeah, so there is an unfortunate catch-up that the residential is playing now. The residential activity is outpacing the commercial activity.
I should point out, too, that although we gave you a bunch of choices on this chart, there are actually many more in between.
Oh, yes.
It can increase by .001 for a shift. So if you were to... Generally, it's not a benefit because the difference can only change by a penny at a time, so...
It's not worth it, yeah.
Yeah, having a 1.5203 doesn't make much sense.
Yeah, average cycle value, yeah.
Interestingly caught is that the average household in Free Town is up to $475,000. And in our earlier meeting, you know, that special town meeting we had, I think it was, everything was quoted at $300,000. That's a big difference in what we really are at. Keep that in mind, too.
Right. We weren't sure at one point where Bristol Plymouth was coming up with the number for the average value they were coming up with, and their data was just a little outdated. It was a prior year's average number that they were using.
This comment, I think, you're the $475,000. Is that current today or as of January 1st?
That is current as of last January 1st.
So that may even go higher before it starts to go down.
Yeah, so we've run typically about 18 months behind the market. Our assessment date is fixed at January 1st, plus we collect anything that may happen between then and June 30th. So if you put a huge addition on your house in March and you manage to get it all complete by June 30th, your value's going to go up quite a bit. But if you've done nothing to your house, then right now, it's valued at what it was on January 1st. The good news is, when the market is doing really well, taxes lag behind that, so the values, our values, are not going up as much as the market. The bad news is, when the recession comes, and I think we all probably are seeing it in the future, the values, the market values, are going to drop about 18 months ahead of when the tax bills are going to drop. So that'll be something important for people to remember, too, is when they come in, they want to file for an abatement because the market has gone to heck and I can't sell my house for this. But a year ago, you could have, and that's still the number we're using.
Yeah, just to be clear, for this year 2023, we use 2021 sales.
Right.
And if you look at the calendar and when... We have to use a complete year. If we don't have enough sales in a particular category, we did this six months earlier aside, but we need a complete year. If you look at the calendar, we have to be in 2021 because we're working on 2023 in 2022. So as soon as we can look at, the most recent for our purposes is 2021. But I do want to reiterate that the value of the property is not directly tied to the tax bill. The tax bill is a reflection of what the budget is. What our job is and what these numbers reflect is... And as a matter of fact, in state law, it specifically says that our job is to clearly and equitably distribute the budget. So it's not about what a specific value is. One of the jokes I always tell people is, "Would you like us to cut all the values in half?" Everybody says, "Yeah, that'd be great." "No, because then the tax rate would have to double to make up for it because we're still spending to save a lot of money." It's like saying, you know, if you're going to go to the store and spend $100, it doesn't matter if you do $101 bills or $520. You're still spending $100. Doesn't matter what that portion is. So that's the same thing here. As sales prices go up, ultimately, the bill is going to be reflected as the budget itself.
And it's all set basically at the annual town meeting. The Finest meeting, and the Board puts together the budget for the year. The annual town meeting, the people vote for what they want to spend. And I think a lot of times, they don't realize what they're voting for is the tax increase every year, basically. And we're very close to the levy limit this year. We're very close to the levy limit. That's based on the amount which was approved at the town meeting. Very close.
So I have a question. So I like this breakdown up here in the top left corner. So really, at the end of the day, residential is 78.63% of the total assessed value of property in our town, right? And the commercial is only 3.9%. Industrial is 13, and the personal property, so is that like cars, boats?
The personal property is going to be furniture, fixture, and equipment used by businesses.
Okay, that always sets.
Yeah, so for people that may not be getting that at home, if this were a business, this table would be personal property, the microphones, the computers, the TV.
Gotcha. Interesting. So then, I'm not sure if you know this one offhand. So of the commercial property, what's the most valuable property we have in there?
That is going to be a race between Stop &amp; Shop, Amazon, and Copart.
That's what I was thinking. So really, of that 3.9%, like, I'm sure two or three businesses probably make up 80% of that.
Quite a bit, yeah.
Right?
Gets a little bit hard because Amazon is still getting a TIF. Their value, when we do this, is reduced from what it naturally would be. But those would be the three that would be in the top running as the biggest businesses.
So like, and I say that, so I think about it, all right? So if I'm increasing, say, just throw there, it's the, you know, the factor of 0.8383. So it's saying that the average commercial bill would increase by $567. But in reality, for like a Stop &amp; Shop or Amazon, that's going to be a much different number.
Oh, my, yes. So Stop &amp; Shop, we said the average... Up at the top, we have the average commercial property is valued at $627,281. Stop &amp; Shop is valued at around $72 million.
I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Close.
Yes.
Very close. Just a few numbers off.
Yes, so there might be some more zeros attached to the bill.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Because I think that's an important thing, like... I want, I'm obviously trying to balance out, trying to mitigate the impact on the residents as much as possible. But also, we have to keep in mind that if we scare away our commercial taxpayers, you know, then that's not going to do us any favors either.
Right, I mean, at the end of the day, we... If you look at some towns historically that have had problems, it's because their lack of commercial base, right? Towns that don't have the commercial base were fortunate that we have some of the commercial base that we do. To Mike's point, it's a $70 million business that's paying taxes or whatever it was, it's, you know, that's a lot of money that we're getting from them, so.
We've also lost a lot of businesses as well. If you look at North Main Street, you know, those plazas aren't very full. So we also want to scare them off. So we got to really find that balance.
So actually, undervalue them slightly. Stop &amp; Shop's closer to $80 million this year.
So there you go. So that's, I mean, you know how many businesses you have to have on South Main Street in order to make up an $80 million business or whatever? Copart is, you know...
And they already pay a much higher rate of tax.
Right.
So it's not $80 million after the residential rate.
It's $80 million.
It's the commercial rate, which is over $20.
Right now, it's $20.56 per thousand. So we had, I don't have one with me, but, you know, it wasn't in last year's... In a Coming Town report, you'll see, we started as part of the Assessors Report listing, I forget if it's the top five or the top 10, property values and what they're paying, or what we're assessing them in taxes, to kind of give that snapshot of, you know, Stop &amp; Shop, $80 million business, they're paying X hundred thousands of dollars in taxes. Information that's important for you guys to know, and people may just be interested in when they wonder how much are these businesses paying? And I say businesses because the top ones are almost always businesses. There are very few houses that break into that.
You know, maybe on range, or we don't have any.
No.
Well, I know my consideration, too, that industrial, utility companies, cell phones, there's a big piece of the industrial value as well as the personal property value.
That's true.
So every cellphone antenna you see, we count it, and there's a value to it, and that goes into the personal property.
And what you're similar to with the real estate value for commercial, Amazon is part of their TIF, their personal property is reduced by an equal percent. So right now, I think they get 75% off their real estate. They're also getting 75% off their personal property. Stop &amp; Shop is still on the old style of TIFs, so they're at... Their real estate is reduced by 1%, but their personal property is completely exempt because in the old days, if you had a TIF, you didn't pay a personal property tax. Their TIF ends... Fiscal '24 is the last year they have the TIF. So Fiscal '25 would be the first time that we ever taxed them on personal property.
Which is a lot. It's a big number.
It is. Some of it, though, may be 20 years old by that point, by the time we hit it. But it will be a big number regardless, but it will not be necessarily as big as it may have been. Amazon coming under the new system of TIFs is... We're catching them a lot quicker, a lot sooner, which is helpful.
All right, so I guess there's any inputs from your end on what you guys say, particular suggestions on a residential factor, or you're going to put all that on us?
Pretty much that.
Actually, we get the duck behind the statue.
I know.
I feel like that's the same question last year.
You did.
I mean, that's the worst one. They make the decision on the shift. I know, I was sitting there like that. But the important thing here is that residential, they don't get a TIF. They don't have personal property to pay a tax on, but they don't get a TIF on any of their property. So I guess that's one of the things you better consider. And the fact that these companies, they're making a great profit, okay? They're doing business to make money, and that's what they're doing. They're making money. People that live in a house, they're struggling to make money day in and day out to pay their taxes. That's the point I want to try to get at.
I think you're always going to, I mean, at least for me, you're going to see me more towards the residential, right, to take less of the burden on.
I was talking to everyone. I wasn't...
No, no, I know. I'm just saying in general, because you're right. It's a different thing, but at the same time, it also, there's a balance point to what we were just talking about, that we don't want to scare the business away because we need it that they can go to the next town or city or whatever and save an astronaut come out of money when you're talking about $80 million on a business.
One thing I'll point out, and this is not a recommendation or a suggestion, but I just, I know last year, one thing that was important to you guys as a board was that commercial taxes not be going down when residential taxes were going up. That was something you guys focused on. So if you pick a shift... A shift of 1.52 or a factor of 0.8587, anything from there or lower, the average commercial bill will go down, although it's slightly, while the average residential bill is still going up. So that may be an area that you want to focus on at first. Like I said, just knowing that was important in your factoring last year.
Yeah, so you're saying 0.525 is what you were just talking about? Does he have that one at first start?
525 would be the first part where both were going up.
Yeah.
Because like I said before, in almost every scenario on here, the residential bill is going to go up something, but there are far more scenarios where the commercial bill goes down than there's one scenario where the residential bill goes down at all.
But you got to look at how much residential is going to go up. Just take that example, and how much commercial is going to go up. There's a big difference.
Right, everything's going up these days, right? So heating bills are going up, the cost of living is going up. No one's getting extra money. Everything's just going up. So we have to make sure we balances correctly. So we're not putting a burden, or additional burden on all our residents. It's... I don't like your numbers.
I get it.
I don't like them.
Debbie was not very fond of them this afternoon, either.
And that's a good point, because if you look at our town budget, any town budget, a major portion of it is going to be in personnel, healthcare, energy, fuel. You can't, you know, the town buys fuel the same as I do. Well, they buy more of it, but same cost. Well, the bill goes up for the, for me, it's going up for the town as well. And so it's unfortunate, but, you know, this is the system we have. We all get together in a town, and we all share the cost of things, so.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm looking at somewhere just... I'm looking at somewhere around that factor of the 0.8383, where both commercial and residential are going to increase. I mean... I just feel like... No easy answer here.
You're talking about what the shift...
0.1595 would be the CIP shift.
Yep. So 246 for residential and 12...
And 5567 increase for a commercial.
Commercial, yes. Which, let it be known, that's a big difference from the 45049 that it would be if we left it alone, right? So that what you're recommending is a big shift to the commercial, I mean, to the residential factor that will inevitably help them along and put a big burden on the businesses.
It's definitely a much larger... It's a... Yeah.
Dan, what's your crystal ball say? Anything?
Me?
Yeah, you?
I think that was my thoughts was to sort of balance between the two, the residential and the commercial because I know we're focusing on some of the larger commercial building, you know, businesses, and we probably feel that they can absorb it, but there is still a lot of mom and pop businesses that I concern myself with because we don't want to put them out of business. They do carry a big burden of our tax levy, and without them, we will be shifting it back to residential, right? So we want to be protective of them, too, to make sure that we're not putting them out of business. So I think something in the middle where Trevor is suggesting is palatable to me, where you, you know, no one, not the residents and not the commercial are bearing the whole thing. Because like I said, yes, Amazon probably can do just fine. But, you know, we have a lot of little businesses that really can contribute quite a bit to this town, but in more ways than one, right? In more ways than just tax dollars, jobs, and a lot of other things. And they help with our needs. They're there when we need them. So there's a piece of me, and I don't have, you know, a list of those businesses, but I just want to be as protective of them as well. So it's so hard, right? It's a hard call because you've got those residents who really can't afford another... In addition to my tax bill, so it is a hard, it is a hard call.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the little mom and pops as well. I'm concerned about their elderly population, single parents. It's a tough one, yeah. Find the right one down the middle is the appropriate thing to do all the way around.
The problem is, is what you said, there's no right, right?
Yeah, it's right. It's... No matter the decision we make, not everyone's going to love it, right? We've got to make sure we, one, take care of the residents and take care of the town at the same time. So the last talk was 3.83, right, which is 1.59, right? So that shifts 237, 246, roughly.
Yeah, I mean, I like where Trevor's heads up, and I mean, I think beyond that, I think we're splitting hairs to try and go away from what he's saying. I'm okay with it. Right.
All right, so are we on board with that?
I'm on board on that, fine.
So now, how does this work? Do we actually vote on this? In while we're in the public hearing, or should I close the public hearing? Perfect guy here to figure that out.
There are two schools of thought on that, but what you can do is vote to not take any... Well, if you want to choose, you can ask if there's anybody else in the room that has input. Vote then to close the input portion of the hearing, debate it amongst yourselves, vote on a number, and then close the hearing at that point.
All right. Is there any input from the crowd? No? All right. So I guess I'll turn motion to close the input session of the public hearing?
Motion made.
Second? All in favor? All right. All right. Alright, alright, um, so I think that we, that we discussed. And it's, it's the factor itself that we'll be voting on, correct?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll adjourn, well, I'll actually, so I should close this first, right, close the public hearing?
Um, you can vote on it and then close the public hearing.
Okay, so I'll adjourn motion to, um, set the fiscal year twenty twenty-three residential factor. Uh, at point eight three eight three.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor? Alright, and with that, I'll adjourn motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
If I could ask you guys to recess for a couple of minutes, there's something the assessors have to sign that we're going to notarize for.
Okay, yep, so adjourn motion to go to recess?
Uh, motion.
Second. All in favor? We are now back from recess, um, so continuing on. Jan item two is, um, open session minute, open session meeting minutes from eleven twenty-one twenty twenty-two. Now adjourn motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from eleven twenty-one twenty twenty-two.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jan item three is the date for the annual local town election on April third twenty twenty-three. Does everyone agree that's the best available date?
That's the first Monday of the.
There's nothing going on that day though. Alright, so with that, I'll adjourn motion to, uh, call the next annual election, town election on April third twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, jan item four is discuss and vote whether to utilize a new image cast precinct tabulator. At the April third twenty twenty-three annual local town election, and therefore. And thereafter, in all future elections, state, federal preliminaries, primaries, and general elections held at the town free town. And with that, discontinue the use of the acuvo optical scan tabulators. So if you have town clerk here.
Yeah.
Can you, uh?
Sure, so Cheryl.
Thank you for coming, by the way.
You're welcome, thank you for having me, so Cheryl Estrella, town clerk, so we've been discussing the, um. Uh, the existing tabulators for quite some time now, they're finally, uh, they've been ordered, they're here. So this is just a formality, um, in accordance with state law to, um, accept the use of the new tabulators, um. Going forward and to discontinue the use of the, the old optical scan ones. At this time, I wouldn't, um, suggest to declare them surplus, because I did have a conversation with the moderator, we may have, um, future use for those. Um, going into town meeting, so, um, just to put it out there. Um, still have to, you know, uh, come up with a policy and a procedure, um, but if there was to be a secret ballot. It would make it much quicker and much easier, rather than having the split tickets, you have pre-cut ballots, yes, no, and kinda, you know, repurpose those. Optical scan tabulators, so, but again, this is just a formality, we would need a motion, um, in a second, and I mean, to approve.
Alright. Any questions?
Oh, sounds great though. So everything that you, you going forward for this one, we have everything already in place, do we have to go out and buy anything new?
It's already in place, already on order, they're just waiting for delivery and waiting for us, um, you know, seal of approval, and then, uh, with that would come a training session for all of the new. Uh, election, well, for all the election workers. That's included with the pricing, so, um, we're hoping to possibly have that trained sometime in February.
You took the three out of my mouth, I was gonna ask about training on it, because obviously, the day of, you're already stressed enough, last thing we needed to try to run around with teaching.
No, it would be, it would be, there would be a training session in place, we'd have, um, again, uh, with the votes act, there was a, a lot of changes this year, we came up. It was a very, very busy election cycle, um, since July, prepping for all of that, so, um, with the new tabulators, it should. We'll definitely have the training and make things a little bit smoother going forward, you know, these machines are extremely old and, um, we've had quite a few hiccups, we had some hiccups. The day of the general election, we were able to overcome that, so this is just a step in the right direction, it'll be much quicker and tabulating that at the end of the evening. So, we're excited, new things coming.
Great, alright. Alright, so with that, I'll adjourn motion to, um, utilize a new image cast precinct tabulators at the April third twenty twenty-three annual election. Annual local town election, and thereafter, in all future local, state, and federal preliminary, primary, and general elections held in the town free town. And with that, discontinue, discontinue the use of the, um, acuvo optical scan tabulators.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and moving on, jan item five. This is, um, the ballot question to be added to the annual town election scheduled for April third twenty twenty-three, um. Election Bristol County, Bristol Plymouth Regional Tech, Regional Technical School District debt exclusion. So I'll just read the ballot question, shall the town free town be allowed to exempt from the provisions of proposition two and a half? So-called the amounts required to pay the town's, um, allocable share of the bond issued for the Bristol Plymouth. Regional Technical School District for the purpose of paying costs of designing, engineering, constructing, and equipping a new district-type school to be located at. Two oh seven Hart Street, town Massachusetts, including the payment of all the costs incidental and relative thereto. So, obviously, this is related to us joining BP, I think most folks should, uh, understand this, if, if we do not get. This does not pass, then our town budget will be in serious trouble. Um, cause we, we already voted to join, now this is how we are gonna pay for that. And without a debt exclusion, um, we'll be in some trouble.
Yeah, let me just update you a little bit, so after town meeting, free town going to join BP, however, it required all of the. Existing communities members to also approve free town coming in, one of them didn't do that, I, I think it was beholden, they haven't done it as of yet.
Yeah.
Um, so we will not be a member, um, uh, this, this year coming up. Uh, I'm assuming they will vote for us to join, um, come spring, and we will actually become a member in this full year, um, twenty-five. Um, but getting this ballot question out, um, if it should pass, great. If it should fail, you will have another meeting or another election to ask yet again, maybe, we, you know, make sure we educate people or let them know what's going on. But I just wanted to make.
Yeah, that's good, yeah. I, I'd rather get as many swings as possible.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, well, it's possible. So my question on this one is, so the last, of last STM such town meeting, we kind of punted this question. Where at last second due to the, our council telling us, hey, we wasn't wording correctly. Has this question and how it sits and how it lays as, as it is gone through them as well?
It has, but so did that one, but yes, it has gone through my wall again to the last bit, and. What was going on at town meeting, um. Was, was, he thought that we would need, we needed to, we were borrowing the money, we were gonna borrow the money ourselves and pay, pay, but. The BP is actually doing the borrowing, we just have to pay a portion of the, the, uh, the debt, the bond. So, um, we don't need to go to town meeting, this is a one and done, you're selection, this selection, if approved, is done.
Yeah, and at time, and what we learned to do that process is that regardless of what we voted on at town meeting, it still has to be a valid question.
Right, I knew that, I knew it needed to still go as a valid, but, um, I, I was, I mean, it was.
I don't, I don't think I knew that.
I did not, we were planning on, on this, that, this was already pretty part of that process, but this, this will be, if it passes, it's, it's done. If it doesn't, we, we'll patch it, it was a thing, I guess.
Yeah, and will we be allowed to kind of give out some additional information if required to kind of like, um?
We probably should start education, educating people so that it's not a surprise to them that it's valid question.
Yeah, exactly.
That was my second question to this, was can we do like the state of, head of state comes out and gives a booklet, that tells us, hey. By joining means this, by not joining means that, is that something we can do added to the question at the bottom, or send out another pamphlet or whatever, what we did last time?
So you could, you can absolutely do a mailing, obviously, that's an additional cost, you would not be able to put the explanation on the ballot itself, but you can certainly do informational sessions. Um, there's plenty of technology now, YouTube videos, uh, anything really to get the word out there, but I would strongly suggest, um, show both sides. And I, just as, um, just as an aside, just to let you know, um, I would need the form of the question voted on, um, in my office delivered to me by February twenty-seventh. Twenty twenty-three, in order to appear on the spring local, uh, election ballot, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to make that note.
So, so, so if we vote on it tonight, that will be.
If you vote on, but if there's additional questions and you wanna extend the, the discussion, I, the last absolute date would be February twenty-seventh.
And I'm okay with this, and I think what you brought up was actually one of the questions I was gonna bring up as far, and I think it's more of an internal thing as far as sending off a mail or. Right, stuff we've done in the past and doing that and sending, and obviously a non-biased way, but sending it off and saying, okay, this happens, this is what will happen. This is, this is what will happen, so the general public knows and can hopefully go on.
And I'm sure there's additional questions too, so I would, I would strongly suggest having another informational session. So, you know, people have the opportunity to ask that questions and are not just watching a video, but maybe have that somewhere.
Definitely.
I don't know, you, you and, uh, you and Tim have been doing great videos, so.
Oh, Jesus.
It'll make, get you out there again.
Alright, alright, so I think, I'm, I'm good with this language, any questions on that? Alright, so it's voted on now, so, uh, I'll adjourn motion to, um, approve the ballot question to be added to the local. Annual town election scheduled for April third twenty twenty-two, for the Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical Occasional, uh, District Debt Exclusion. In the language as I read earlier.
You said twenty-two.
April third twenty twenty-three. Alright.
I, I will make that motion.
A second on paper, uh, aye, I'm gonna do that for the next, probably eight months. Alright, great, next is to. Vote on whether we should provide notary services to the public, and if, um, if so, whether to acquire insurance to cover this, and what offices would offer this service? That has come up a bunch of times in the past, so can someone remind me of the pros and cons here?
Certainly, so, um, with notary services, that is just an additional, um, service that we provide the town residents. Um, town clerk's offices, um, traditionally have always handled that. Uh, there was a question that was raised about a year and a half ago that I grew up to administration, um. Due with the influx of, of notary services being required, you know, if something should happen, um, those providing all the services. Um, in their capacity as employees would not be covered under the existing insurance, um, policies, so, um. Although it's a service that, you know, it's a free service that we provide for the residents, um, you know. I've had, I've toyed around with this question personally within my office, um, that I, I'm thinking I am, I personally. I'm leaning towards discontinuing that service to the general public, public effective January first. Um, the liabilities are not being covered, it's not something that, um, we should take lightly personally, that's my feeling. Um, and, you know, there are several other, um, businesses in town that have notary services available.
Yeah.
Um, I know the credit union down the road from us, um, they can certainly provide notary services, and with that too, as, as government officials. We do have certain exclusions, so not everything can be notarized by us, um.
And that's, yes, messy too, cause then we have to know what you can and cannot do, and that kind of adds.
So anything to do with wills, powers of attorney, and any real estate leases, any type of real estate transactions, obviously, we've always been excluded from those. But again, this is just, uh, through our office, um, I know there's been several employees who have gotten their notary, um, commissions. Um, unfortunately, the state does not provide any type of training, um, we had to buy the book from a state library. And kind of figure that out on our own, um. As to what we can, cannot do, and how, but procedures and what acknowledgements or jurats or ots we have to provide. So it's, it's a very convoluted thing, um, where there are some risks and liabilities that shouldn't be taken lightly, so. At this, at this point in time, I personally don't feel comfortable in my office, but again, with other offices, that's something for administration to decide. Again, this question wasn't posed, um, from me, on this agenda item, but it has come up in the past for me, I know from my. I, I just feel bad for the, you know, the elderly pensioners who come in and just need us to, um, notarize the plan, saying that they're still living.
Yeah.
So this come up, this probably was about the insurance meeting, correct, so we don't have insurance if there's a liability. Cheryl does something, I, I don't know, and it creates a liability, we're not insured for that, and apparently, from the insurance, um, providers. Meeting, that there's, um, this comes up a lot, like there is, there is liability generated by. I don't know, notarizing the, um, document, I'm not sure of the scenario, but he said, you know, you really need to look at that and have a policy in place. Um, and we don't really have a policy, and so that's probably have this, we, we put this on the agenda, we're, we're pushing on the agenda at this, uh, at this point. But I believe the insurance was around a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars additional insurance per year to en- ensure, um, to staff members.
So I'm okay with that, but I'm more worried about having a policy in place, to your point of like, okay, so we spend a thousand dollars to give. The residents, you know, something, that's fine, but. I, I don't know, that, that's a policy, so what will do, how will do it, who will do it?
Right.
Right, and then there, especially if they're, they don't feel comfortable, I don't feel right saying Cheryl, well, you have to do this, right? Like if someone doesn't feel comfortable with it, then.
Well, and, and talking with her on, but I hear that she's not comfortable, because if there's a liability, it falls on her.
And this will cover, that thousand dollars will cover her.
It will cover her, so that she, if there is something that gets litigated, she'll have the privilege from the town, so.
As in my capacity as a, as a town.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We would still be able to notarize town documents and internal documents.
That was my question, my question is like, we still do internal. Okay, so public, on average, you know, for a scenario that you, how many of these do you get a year?
It's, it, it depends on the time of year, so when you have the pensions who are coming in from the school department, then you have the elderly pensioners, um. You know, you have, um, financial statements, divorces, um, uh, child support, core rechecks for employment. You know, just last week, I think I had five, but they could be, they could be four or five weeks, I don't have anything. With not being, with not charging residents, I have the ability to shut off that notary services, um, during key busy times for us. Um, unfortunately, if you're notary, you're public and, and you've gotta kind of offer that.
So you're, you're, yeah, so that's, that's great that you do that, so my concern is this, my concern is also a statement as well. We already have all these residents going to you for all the, the myriad of things you've, you just said, and at the very end, all those documents requires a notary. So essentially, a one-stop shop can be created at your office, now they have to leave, go somewhere else, get them notarized, that's in a sense, correct?
So, so the documents all have to be completed prior to them appearing in front of a notary, so there's no. As a notary, all we're doing is witnessing the signature, and the person is, is taking the oath, swearing that they are who they are with their ID.
So that's the last step.
So that, that is the last step in any notary, that's all the notary does, and then, you know, there's the education part of it too, because, you know, there's been times where, you know. I've had to turn people away because they've come with incomplete packets, and if people don't have the training behind it, that's also gonna lead you up to liability. So there's a lot of pieces to it.
So, yeah, what I'm moving towards, discontinue it effective January first, and then we can work on really having a good policy. Getting the right insurance, getting that all sorted out, and then re, then potentially, after we have all the information and. Of actual policy in place, then we can maybe, you know, start this next year, um, and, you know. I think everyone might, will, will feel more comfortable, let's say, a training, and we'll feel more comfortable not having that liability, right?
And then you, you'll have, if you choose to go that way, you'll have the assigned people, um, who would be covered. You know, cause you can't prevent anyone from getting their, their notary, but they just wouldn't be able to do it on town time.
Yeah.
And during working hours, but they could do it, you know, on, you know, outside of that. But we also keep in mind though too, we currently, um, just because we, we provide as a courtesy, we don't, we don't charge.
Yeah.
So, it's a dollar twenty-five, I believe, uh, per state law per page from other services, so that's also something that was never discussed before either.
Yeah, and I mean, there is, there's certain things where I were in public, I'm okay with not charging, that is great, but I, I. I've said it before and I'm gonna say it again, and Trevor just brought it up, is not having a policy in place and stuff, I don't like that, right? I don't like things changing by, based on which window you go to, right, everything you're saying, there should be a couple of people, and that's that, so, I'm, I'm on board.
Same here, let's, let's, let's terminate it generally first, create that policy, maintain our metrics to see. You know, next year's discussion could be, hey, last year, we turned away five hundred people, is this something that we start charging? You know, looking at it more for you, you're, you're busy, I see you, my walk into town hall is always so natural window, right, for who knows what. So, does that mean we do charge and not charge down the road, right? So that way, we can maintain that proper balance of work, life, and work, 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 you know, just doing what we should, then the rest of the work can be done. So if you could, while we create a policy, always, also keep track, you know.
I can certainly do that with the new, um, with the new receipt system that we've implemented.
Thank you.
Um, everything was pretty much handwritten before, but now I can just, I can just tack that on there. But again, that's not gonna give you a lot of time as an overall, um, statistics-wise.
Right, I just wanna know if, you know, if we, if we have five percent of the town coming in for a notary, that's something we look at, if we have, you know. Less than that, we can also.
And we also have, we also have votes too, that's something that you should consider, um, town Berkeley has, uh, limited office hours. So we get a lot of residents from, from other towns. So we get a lot of residents from from other towns.
Right. Okay.
But just from my understanding, if you do decide to discontinue, there's still going to be continuing to to notarize town documents.
Yeah, of course. Yeah. And yeah, just this is just extraordinary.
Outside of that. Okay.
Um and then, believe me, we'll hear about it if people are upset about this, but I I think that we should, you know, and we'll we'll start almost immediately looking at what it takes to get the right policy, the right training, so that, you know, we can do this in a smart way. You know, potentially some midway through next year or something.
I think you will get pushback. I mean, I think you will.
Yeah.
Pretty quickly.
Yeah.
So we will start working on it.
Alright, perfect. Good.
I do have a policy currently on Tom uh Thork's webpage. If you want to take a look at that as
Yeah.
and it does explain the the exclusions that I do have. So if you want to start that as a topic.
Yeah. And then maybe I'll maybe I'll frame this, frame this or word this motion is that it'll be a pause on notary until we have a um policy in place, policy and insurance.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you want us to pursue insurance?
I think we, I I don't feel comfortable with not having insurance, right?
Yeah.
Uh alright, so I'll make a motion that we pause providing notary services, jam one, um until we have insurance and policies in place. Um jam one, twenty twenty three.
Oh, I'll make that motion. I second.
All favor?
Alright.
And hopefully, you know, by March or so, we can get this back up and running. Feel comfortable.
Just in time for elections.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I just have one other question. I know there are other people that, you know, like I would notarize for you, I know, but you're very notarizers for conservation and planning.
Yeah.
Um is there anyone else, Cheryl, that notarizes as part of their position that I know?
Well, it's never been um differentiated. Um as I alluded to before, um people have taken it upon themselves to get their commissions because it's been easier for both, but there have been, um besides these, me too, there have been other employees that have gone ahead and and received that, but no one, including myself, um that I know of and I have documentation of, has been authorized to notarize documents on behalf of the town for outside residents, for outside of the town.
Yeah, because then I think we, your point is we're gonna need to know who does it, right? Because then we're for insurance purchases, right? Because we said it's a, that was a thousand dollars for two people, but if we have six people and it makes sense, well then.
I know currently, um Tim in my department has his commission because um it's just a carryover from when he was in.
Yeah.
So yeah, and then um I believe the assistant tax collector as well.
Alright, that makes sense. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Alright, good. So let's, yeah. So now we're going over to the uh.
Yeah, let's go. We told seven o'clock, so.
One minute?
One minute.
I'm gonna mark where I ended.
So they're gonna need to notarize. Get there quick.
Yeah, two weeks.
Sorry, Victoria. We gotta shift things around. We got the setup here.
Alright. I can hear all the words.
Alright.
Dale, I can hear you. Everybody else can hear you too. Hold on.
Is that gonna come through the speakers? Oh.
I think it will do. Alright, it's a vote. Gordon?
Alright.
Dale, can you just talk for a second?
It's just coming through your computer.
Alright, so is there a better place to put this?
Just record it.
Record it and then. I think I do a speakers, but I don't think they're gonna make it any better. I think anybody that's involved in a hearing should probably pop in the front row as well, so that you can hear.
Sorry, Victoria.
No worries.
Oh, I don't know. You just did.
Barry looks looks in his company.
Alright, so good afternoon everyone. I'm going to uh call uh public hearing. So I'm gonna read the public hearing first and then uh. So um.
Can I just, it's it's a hearing. Okay, so it was a public hearing, it was just a short hearing.
Oh, okay.
There is such a.
So, okay, yeah, because it said public hearing on one thing, and then this just is hearing noise. Okay.
Who the niggas and they can hear you, they're making faces like you can't hear you.
Okay. Someone requested a public hearing.
They requested a a hearing based on.
I requested two hearings. One was was with the Board of Health, and that got ignored. Then I had to go to the selectmen to get this hearing.
The Board of Health.
I am the Board of Health. We are the Board of Health. So I'm the chair of the Board of Health, but we are the Board of Health.
Okay.
So. Alright, so I'm gonna read the hearing notice. Um the Freetown Board of Health will hold a hearing swing to one oh five C M R four ten dot eight five zero in response to a request from Mr. Barry Marvel of forty one Locust Street, Assona. The hearing will take place on December twelfth, twenty twenty two at seven P M.
Recording in progress.
So in the Freetown Police Station Community Room located at fifteen Royal Drive, East Freetown. The hearing will address the concerns of the petitioner relative to the results of a housing inspection that was conducted on October twelfth, twenty twenty two, and subsequent correction correction order issued on October twentieth, twenty twenty two. So with that hearing, so I'm assuming you're Mr. Marvel?
I am.
Walton? So um, you know, um listen to what you have to say.
Are you do I, am I on a time limit or is there?
I mean, within reason, right? I mean, but yeah, no, there's no.
Alright. Well, this is a long time coming. It's been going on for a couple of years now, so. And I haven't had a chance to be able to, you know, say exactly. I have plenty of evidence. Anything I say here, I do have documents to back up everything I have to say. Uh my name is Barry Marvel. I work as a training specialist on chemical reactors for a local chemical company. I rented a home at forty one Locust Street, um January of two thousand seventeen is when my lease started. Um with my son, who has disabilities, and my sick mother, uh with COD and many other ailments. The uh, when I looked at the house, the uh ex-wife's, the landlord's ex-wife showed us the house. She told us that there was no heat upstairs in the two bedrooms, and that I will need to purchase heaters. Then when she showed me the water, I asked why the water pressure is low. She said it was due to having a well. This is the first home I've ever rented with a well. Um I've never had an eviction on my name. I've never been late on rent. I've I've never, ever any issues ever in my life until now, until this issue here. Um, you know, there was some issue. I I'm not gonna go into too much. I'll cut out some of it, but about the issues before the water situation. But it wa- it, this wasn't just, you know, that's the only thing, you know what I mean? There was a lot of other instances, but I'll just let it get to the Board of Health and things. On six twenty one twenty, um the uh, I came home to the well system downstairs and brought out the accumulation tank, and there was about four to six inches of water in the basement. Um I had the land, I called the landlord, Mr. Cromwell, uh he sent a plumber over. Uh but I was without water for a week. Now, mind you, my mother was sick and on hospice as well at this time, okay? Throughout this this issue. Um so they, I was without water for a whole week. The whole system was down until they could get a tank in. I, you know, COVID and all that good stuff. But I didn't ever complain to nobody. I never came to the city, never went to the Board of Health. So after the the tank was fixed, the plumber from Lucas Pumps came up and he tested the water and he's like, wow, you have no water pressure. And I said, well, that's the same water pressure I've had since I moved in. He said, well, then your well system isn't working. I'm gonna go downstairs and investigate. He went downstairs and investigated, realized the system was not working. It was totally clogged, it and it hadn't been working for some time. Um so what he did was he opened a bypass. Once the bypass was open, we notified the landlord because he knew, um also, there's a letter which I have in here from that plumber who states that he investigated it and realized the system was not working. Um the town had that letter because I got it from the town as an information act. Um but that, for some reason, that letter never made it even into my court case for the eviction, so the notice to compel, nothing. To show that I was innocent, that I never touched this man's well system, because the very first thing I went through from June all the way until um I went to the Board of Health on the eighth of August to Derek. Um I kept sending many, many texts. I have them all here to the landlord stating, hey, the water is rusty. The water is rusty. Um it's not drinkable. It smells like rotten eggs, the whole nine yards. And he actually responding back, so there was a communication of him him acknowledging that there was an issue with the well. So I kept sending messages, hey, when you gonna fix the well? My mother's sick. I had nurses in and out, nonstop, meals on wheels, the whole nine yards. Um, nothing. Instead, he just blamed me, saying that I never serviced his well. So that that's why it's not working. Um which I never did service his well. It's not in my lease too. It's on a sticker on the salt well that he submitted to Derek after I went to the Board of Health. And Derek actually responded. It's all in the documents. Derek responded, well, if that's in your in your lease, then you're covered, saying that I was responsible to service his well. But it's not in my lease. Okay? Um secondly, it's on a sticker on the salt well that says this well needs to be serviced yearly. The problem is, the next date is blank. He submitted that to to your folks. He submitted that to Derek, saying, when's the next date supposed to be served? I can't be in mind, Rita. Secondly is, if it's an extra cost above your rent, it has to be in your lease. It has to be in your lease to say, hey, you're responsible to pay two hundred and ninety five dollars and ninety five cents a year to service my well. It's not in there. It's in there about, I have to supply wa- uh um oil, propane. That's an extra cost above my lease. So, um needless to say, the the the, he refused to fix it. So I even texted him the Mass Doc Gov laws. I texted him that I was going to the Board of Health because I went online and they said, if this is happening to you, mind you, during a moratorium, on top of it, you're not supposed to be able to evict anybody, do any of this stuff. Three weeks after going to the Board of Health, both my mother and I was served thirty day notice to quits, eviction. Due to criminal activity in health and safety. I called Mr. Cromwell's lawyer that night, Mr. Ozymandor, who's in these files as well. And I asked him, what criminal activity? Alls I do is work, and I take care of my mother who's on hospice and sick, and I have a son with a disability. That's all I do. He said it was due to me allowing my family to live in these conditions with the water that I caused. Okay? I have everything documented here. So now I'm trying to learn the code because I had no clue about anything. Like I said, I've never had a problem. So why did I need to learn the codes? I didn't. Now I know every single one back and forth. And there's a reason. So I do what what the what the Mass Doc Gov says, call the Board of Health, right? So nothing happens. I keep calling, I keep calling. Mary finally takes and uh gets a correction, comes down and inspects my home. And she's the one that found no heat upstairs. Okay? Now literally, no baseboards, no heat, no nothing. Okay? Um so she cited him for that, gave him fourteen days to fix the heat, gave him twenty four hours to fix the water. My water is orange. I paid for the test after after a February visit by Kevin came out to the house because I kept calling and calling, and when's this getting fixed? When's this getting fixed? When he, when he got there along with the building commissioner, oh, good lord, I think I said that right. They did an inspection of the home, and they found, yes, no heat still. Now, mind you, there was a correction order put in place, right? So you're supposed to call for an inspection, you get a, you get a correction order. Those things are supposed to be fixed and they allow them a lot of time. They have twenty four hours to fix the water, fourteen days to fix the heat. That was seven hundred and fifty days ago. Over that. Okay? So then you're supposed to get, once it's fixed, you get a reinspection. That's that's the law. Then there's a letter of compliance. Then the case is dismissed. This one, that that correction only only had an inspection. That was it. No reinspection, no letter of compliance, no nothing. They dropped the case. You guys took him to court. You took him to court. And what he did was, he used a letter from a plumber that came in December, two months after I was already served thirty day notice to quits, right? Me and my dying mother. They had a plumber come to the house, premier war. They submitted that letter to get out of all the trouble with you folks in court. And in that letter, the plumber says, oh, the tenant never had the well serviced. He opened the bypass, never told the landlord. Therefore, when we show up six months later, the whole system's rusted out. This man destroyed his well. And that's what he used to get out of trouble in court.
So, alright.
So then I called and got another per.
Alright, I I'm listening, but I just don't want this to go on. I apologize. I don't want it to go on forever, you know, something. So um one of the things I will say is, we don't, I, Kevin didn't go for the first initial inspection of someone else.
That was Mary.
Yeah. So uh Kevin is requesting a a new, right, a visit with you to go.
He's requesting a reinspection of this current current correctional, which is a problem, which I was, if I can get to. It's it's important.
Okay.
So after all this, I even had Kevin, like I said, Kevin came to my house with that bill and inspected. They said that the upstairs was illegal. No permits were ever pulled, which heck, which is why whenever I plugged in something upstairs, it would pop my mother's auction machine in the living room because it was daisy chained, the power.
Okay, I I just, I would be careful what we talk about as far as like how, I don't know if it's relevant for what this is, right? So I don't want it to go down a rabbit hole, so.
I I get you, but this is all relevant because.
This is actually a hearing along the um last.
Which is what I was just getting to.
Yeah.
So it's on this last.
Correct. Even though all this stuff, but it doesn't make sense. How can it all get thrown or cancelled? There's no, none of those things.
It was went to court and that was was um adjudicated in court, right? Prior stuff, you admittedly went went to court.
But it's not fixed.
I understand that, but I'm just, and that was like, it went, it went, did go to court and have court action, and the court decided what they decided wasn't in town, Freetown.
Okay. So I called up for another inspection because when Kevin and the inspector came in February, they didn't do any um inspection report. They didn't do any correction order, and they said in that letter that there's still no heat upstairs, but no correction order. You cannot see a violation and not report it. That is against code violation and law. If you see a violation, you have to, if I tell him, he didn't. But instead, he sat there in my home before leaving and he looked at me. He said, I'll be filing this report. He said, but don't take our kindness for stupidity because we still have the law on our side. Okay? That's wrong. And then the next time I call him to get this other inspection, I get him on the phone and he says, oh, I told him who I was. He says, oh, I'm surprised you're still living there. He said, whatever you're doing is working. You know, I'm not trying to do anything. I'm trying to make what's right and make this man accountable, and that nobody rents this man ever again. So when this other inspection came, I wore my body cam. I have this all on 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 camera. When this man came to my house, he was so irate. He was coming down to talk to Kevin. He was gonna condemn the house. He was going to um uh, he was going to uh go after the water source because my water still smells like eggs. My rust, my eye, I paid to get the water test at the lab that you guys suggested, hundred and sixty dollars. I paid for that. The iron recommended, I know it's recommended, is no more than zero point three. It's a recommendation. I get that. Mine's sixteen point eight. Everything is orange. Then I I told this inspector, and he even looked at it. My my bathroom ceiling is covered in black mold. I have the pitches. There's no ventilation in the bathroom at all, zero. I get nothing but black mold in it. They've all seen it. Nobody reported that. Then he leaves the house saying he's going right down to the city, going to talk to Kevin, he's gonna get the house condemned, all this stuff. And then it comes back as water pressure. I never had a problem with water pressure. The bypass is open. I got water left that you can talk about. The day he's coming out the faucet. But if it's orange and smells like eggs, there's a problem. So the correction order is for water pressure, and they're saying it's corrected now because general plumbing, I let them in under twelve hours' notice. So I didn't get in any trouble, which I've done the whole time of this thing. I've let numerous people in. I let him in, he's down working on the basement. Next thing you know, the police are at my door. Anonymous report, somebody called to make sure that the plumbers were okay and that I left them in the home. It's still harassment after harassment, and it's not even fixing the right issue. Water pressure's not the problem, and there's still no heat upstairs. And and his reasoning of not having heat upstairs, well, it doesn't look like anybody's sleeping up there. That's wrong. It's a habit room. I pay for rooms. They have to have heat. I don't need my house burning down in the middle of the night because I'm running extension cords and plugging heaters. It's not right. I don't need to be threatened by this man at my home.
Yeah, I.
I do not need it. If I'm calm for a reason, I don't complain about nothing. I, this is all facts. And and secondly is, I'm getting blamed for not servicing this man's well. There's a letter that that that. There's a letter that, that, that plumber typed up this, that I was the bad man. Somebody in the next room was typing up another letter at the same exact time. Saying, whoa, this house hasn't been serviced since two thousand and fourteen. I moved in two thousand and seventeen. So you didn't service it for three years before I moved in, but then you, you blame the person for not servicing it? And on second, he was told in two thousand and sixteen that the well needs to be replaced and he rented it out.
I, yeah, I don't know. I don't want to, again, we're starting to go down a rabbit hole that I don't want to go down. So one, one of the things is, is, you know, I know Kevin's requesting to be able to go over and do an inspection, right?
Yes, this is the first time this man has gotten back to me in over a year and a half and he expects me to jump to him when he messages me for an appointment. But yet, I've never had one response by this man on anything I've ever emailed.
Kevin, Kevin's relatively new to the position. There's been some change over there. That's a very busy department and I'm not making excuses, but I'm just saying that.
No, and then it was Tanya before that.
Yeah, so, so.
Derek before that, Mary before that.
So.
I even got them talking. You don't time for us to talk. That this is retaliating.
Okay, listen to me. I'm saying, before we continue this on and allow this to go nowhere.
Yes.
Why don't we allow them to go over, do this inspection? We'll continue this public hearing notice, or hearing notice, right? And then maybe we can discuss it again after the fact, after we decide, based on their findings, right? Because.
Is it gonna be inspection or reinspection? Because if the reinspection is just on those two things that he labeled, which were, one of them is wrong. Or is it a total inspection, which I've asked for a complete inspection? I would like, uh, I'm all for a total inspection.
Do we know what he's, he's.
We have an inspection and, and we had an outside inspector to come down.
Yes, and he didn't do a report until three weeks later. It was three weeks later.
We did do a report and it isn't your packet.
Where, where's the block molded in?
I wasn't the inspector, but he did do a report and then the, the letter was issued after that inspection. So we had a totally impartial inspector to go out just because of some of. I don't want to public accusations, but some of the thoughts that possibly they weren't being impartial. Um, so Kevin did have somebody else go out and inspect it and he came back and he came back with the issue of the well. And if you look, the well was tested and you did also test the well in March of two thousand and twenty-two. And although it's high in iron and manganese, it's still portable and drinkable. And so that's, that's part of the issue and I think that was the issue when they went to court is that although. It may not be appealing to the senses, it's, it does have a lot of iron and it does take things orange. And it does, can smell like rotten eggs, which in a water with high manganese can. It was still drinkable and therefore an acceptable well. If you were building a home and you presented this well report. It will pass for, um, acceptable drinking water. And from my understanding, there were heaters put, uh, electric heaters supplied for the upstairs bedroom. And from what I've been told, and I mean Dale, Kevin, they can correct me, that that is sufficient heat. Uh, electric heaters, uh, they don't, it doesn't have to be like, uh, you know, um, a heating system that's attached. To the building like, you know, we don't have.
Thank you, Dale.
I thought the heat had to be controlled by a thermostat five feet off the ground. A, a, a plug-in heater cannot be the main source of heat. It's right in your code. I can look it up right now if you'd like.
I'm sorry, you're incorrect. That's not what the code says.
Who's though? I'm gonna.
Okay. I'm no expert on that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm telling you, it can't be the main source of heat. And that's why it's written up. It, it's, it's in the code. It says it, but.
Well, there's a different source of heat, right? So you're saying the main source of heat on the second floor.
Correct. There is no heat on the second floor. That would be your main source of heat. It cannot be a plug-in heater.
What, what was that, Dale? I'm sorry.
Jerry, can I speak, please?
Absolutely, please do.
Alright. Um, I, I understand where he's going with that, with the heat issue. Um, I, I don't want to get into the minutia of it. Uh, habitable rooms are covered under the code, but there is a question as to whether those are habitable rooms or not. Um, I, I really don't think you want to go down that street right now. As far as the portability of the well is concerned, it is portable water. The aesthetics part, whether or not there's iron and manganese, which can be treated. But the housing code does not force the local authorities, the Board of Health. To make that water aesthetically pleasing. That is something that needs renegotiated between the landlord and the tenant. And we are, like, our department is prepared that an independent inspector may do an inspection sometime in the next two or three weeks. At Mr. Marvell's convenience. And at that point, we'll see where we are.
So, so Dale, are you guys requesting to do a complete inspection or a reinspection?
We will do a re-ins.
A re-inspection, okay.
Correct.
Fair enough. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I show you just these three documents? Is it possible?
I think, oh, I think you probably already.
I got tons, but this, this is from Tanya coordinating and install that paper in line filter that's in my basement. From Charles to her, to me, telling me I had to be there. This is the one that, I've seen this, so they said that they not recommend it, will not correct the water quality of the, of water inside, right?
So correct.
You can't go from a water treatment to. This is from the desk of Tanya where it says technically not corrected.
Alright, so.
And I got plenty more.
Sorry, what's that, Dale?
Let's feed him back. I do not. I, actually, I can leave all these. I'm not a problem.
So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to let Dale speak. What was that, Dale? I'm sorry.
Um, Jared, I'm looking at the most weak water analysis of that property. And it. You know, Mr. Marvell's issues, I understand what he's saying about the aesthetics of the water, but it does need portability. Under the state code, I have a water report in front of me that I'm looking at. It was done this year. Um. That's not a road you want to go down right now. The water does need portability standards. And the aesthetics of it, they help between the tenant and the landlord. It's not an issue that the Board of Health should be getting into.
Exactly. I agree. Thank you. So, so yeah, so I think, sir, at this point, what, what we kind of, what I alluded to before is what I, I feel needs to happen. So we're gonna send Kevin, Dale, whoever, out there representing the Board of Health for a reinspection. We'll let them have their findings and then if we have to bring this back up again, more than happy to. But, you know, you're, based on everything, everything being said, it seems like there's some new stuff that's come up, so let's let.
I gave you my whole body cam with the whole inspection from when I was here. I got it all, telling me to go sue everybody too.
Yeah. So, that's why, listen, that, that's not something, once again. Okay, I'm just saying that, that's not the issue that's in front of us.
I just want accountability. I want people to say, okay, you know, enough is enough. I'm not doing this. I have not spent a penny of this man's money. He's gone into escrow, every single penny. This is not about the money. He made my mother suffer. And for instance, and this is the last thing I'm gonna say, and then I'll, I'll be done, okay? So, the third week of November, a few days before my mother's sixty-ninth birthday. The hospice nurse director came to me and said, you need to move your mother. I said, why? Said, because you're under investigation for senior abuse and neglect due to the water condition in this house, anonymous reports. Then Mr. Cromwell was nice enough to, to submit a letter to your, to your town here in March twenty-fourth. Which admitting to him being the one to making those reports. This is wrong. I was already served a notice. There was no need for further retaliation. My mother got forced out of her home in this town. And it wasn't right.
So, so, um, that's kind of what, what, how we're gonna have to do this one now. So if you can work with them.
I worked with them every time.
No, no, I'm just saying going forward, sir, to be able to, uh, do the inspections so that way we can have the most up-to-date findings. And then we'll take it from there.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
It's a frustration.
Alright, it's not that I'm, I'm, no, it's, it's just been a long time and it's been like, I've been the one that made it look like the bad guy. So anyone coming to my house has already predetermined that I ruined this man's well. That wasn't the case. I didn't touch his well.
So, uh, Mr. Cromwell, is there anything you want to say at this point before your understanding of what we're proposing?
Uh, there's several things I could speak to the point of. I, I feel like you get the understanding of the situation. Uh, a lot of things are double speaker and accurate, but, uh, have already been going to court and we have an ongoing eviction case. Uh, so I won't get into details for too much. Um, I, I will point out the fact that growing and smoking marijuana in a house with a person that's sick on oxygen is not a safe living condition. Uh, several other things I could add in, I don't, I don't feel they're necessary at this time.
That's fine. I, I don't want to.
You need water to grow marijuana.
Go back and.
Just for the record, you need water.
I don't.
Water, you need water.
I don't want to go back and forth on that. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I, I don't believe there's anything I need to add at this point.
Alright, thank you. Alright. So, um, do I?
Can I just close the hearing?
I'm gonna close the hearing and, um, I guess I wouldn't need to continue it, right?
Yeah, if, if we have to do another one, we will.
Alright, so with that, I'm going to close the hearing.
Alright, do you have to have a motion?
Thank you all.
Yeah, I, I, I would just.
So.
So I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Alright, I'll make that motion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it.
Alright. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dale. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. So next agenda, item seven is, uh. Go whether to add a street light at the corner of Friends Street and North Main Street. And I think we have something in our packet here.
Uh, that was a request made by a resident back there. Like, I guess the residents requested it for him. It's very dark there and it could dangerous.
Okay.
Certainly just request them that we put, um, for this street.
I thought, I thought they were saying like, like a streetlight, like a light.
Oh, no, 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 just a, a street light on, you know, overhead, street light to light the intersection. So it's just, it's sort of a procedure just to get you guys okay because of course the town's going to have to pay to illuminate the light.
Yeah.
And to install a light.
Yeah, I mean, if it's dark, I think, I don't have any concern for this. Does anybody else?
No.
Alright.
There's no issues with the neighbors having to notify neighbors of it or anything, right? I think they would be happy that it's gonna be there.
Again, he's, Chuck asked for this because he's got in complaints.
Yeah, so if they're complaining.
Resident complaints. Uh, we have the street lights, you know, we have them available. So the town will have to pay or install it, oh, five hundred dollars. And then we'll have to pay the electricity. So it's sort of a procedural thing. I just wanted the board to be aware. Um, and tell the same why we were doing it, because, uh, like I said, for, you know, for him to request it, it's, there, there's a value.
Absolutely, well, I agree.
Alright, so with that, I want to change a motion to, um, add a street light, the corner of Friends and North Main Street.
A motion made. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next is the, is the policy for ambulance abatements.
Sorry, I have a new company. Changed a few things. Thank you.
I apologize that I get to these ahead of time, but there's, there's problems with the mission critical. Just, and again, that's, that's not, thank you, that's critical, just some food for thought, but. Just a. A little background of, of my idea, as you know, we changed ambulance billing companies in July. It came to light, if, if you recall, prior to that, every month you got a write-off. Document from the fire chief, right? And throw it, throw it on the write-offs monthly. So it came to our attention that we weren't getting those figures. So, we, Deb said, we need to call a meeting in front of us going on. So we met. Uh, myself, the chief, Deb, treasurer, accountant, and with the ambulance billing company to. Figure out what's going on and where we're at. We've, we've had a few, a few bumps, nothing that hasn't been. We've, we've been able to navigate them, but there's been a couple of bumps. So what we found out that we weren't aware of is. Previously, we've sent three bills. Okay, there's, there's the insurance collectives fund and that's kind of spelled out on page one there. The, the process that we follow along with the, the billing company. So the, 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 the important part is two sections from the bottom. Where previously, and this says second bill, but this act was actually the three. So the previous billing company would send three bills. After the third month. We considered the, the funds uncollectible. And then you would get the figure for the write-off. The company that we have now, their policy is to send six bills. That's why we haven't had any write-offs.
It's not a backlog right now.
We haven't made it to the six-month mark.
Gotcha.
So. My question for the board, number one, is. Do you want to stick with that six-month bill? That's, that's their standard. They don't have to do that.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll do what we need to do. And the other thing is, everybody that's, and I'm, I'm, I'm providing the service, right? I, I'm not, the, the money, it, it's a concern to me because it, it brings a lot of revenue to the town, but really. My people and I are focused on providing the service to people to the patients.
Exactly, yeah.
We, we, we worry about patient care, getting people where they need to be in the best condition, we can get them there. And if they can pay and not pay, that's irrelevant to us. So that being said, I. Personally. If you don't pay your bill by the third one, I don't think six is gonna matter.
Yeah.
And on the other side of that. We have people, we have elderly people, and it doesn't happen all the time. We have elderly people. That actually come to the window of the fire station.
Try to pay.
With bags of change, fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, because, because they're trying to, they're a generation of people that pays their bills.
Yeah, exactly.
Right?
Yeah, I agree.
They're gonna, they're gonna turn the heat down to, to, to figure out how they're gonna try to pay this bill.
Yeah.
So we, we've never, we've never done this to, to, as a business, trying to make money. It's just, it's just a nice perk that we have that we have, we're helping, we're helping things out.
Yeah.
So i- in my head. That seventy-year-old couple is, is, with the, with the limited income, is already getting, was getting three bills.
Right.
The stress of, oh, how am I gonna pay this bill, turn the heat down, all, you know. Now I'm gonna do that six times to them, uh, 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 and again, it's, it's your decision.
Yeah.
We would really, the, the people that are involved in the write-offs would really like to continue, do that monthly rather than quarterly. So that, that's another part of the decision we need to have made that we can continue with the, the monthly, just because. The smaller number is easier for my clerk and the treasurer and the office and everyone to track the smaller numbers. Rather than letting it accumulate more. But we just, we need a decision on how, how many bills we're gonna send basically before we consider the funds.
Absolutely. It's, it's stressful a lot being in an ambulance, right? Calling nine-one-one, calling fire services. Now on the backend, you're recovering, you're going through emotions, you're getting billed after billed. That's emotional stress. That's more mental stress than anything else. I like to go back to where it was. We get the bills paid as soon as possible, the payments as soon as possible.
Because the insurance company is a pain, right? So this is, the, the three to six month is really, to your point, chief. It's the individuals that we're now attacking more so.
Wait, okay, the insurance company is paying a percentage.
Yeah.
Right, so, so if they're, they're on.
Yeah.
Medicare, even if they're, if they're a train wrecking it. The ambulance fills twenty-five hundred dollars. We're getting that two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars a whole, that's what they pay.
And, and I guess what I mean is that, that two hundred and fifty, that percentage is the, what we're talking about. Insurance companies already paid.
Right. We're, we're talking about the balance.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the uncollected that you're required to try to collect.
No, what happens? Just out of curiosity, what happens if, say, send three bills out, we write it off. You know, after three months, historically the way we've done it, then someone just pays it five months later. Does that ever happen? Or?
I think, I think it probably has. You just write it back on.
Write it back on?
You just put it back, you can put it right back on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I think, and again, I'm not.
I mean, easy for us to say.
I'm not entirely versed in the whole ambulance form. This is my, I'm, I'm not entirely versed in the whole ambulance fund thing because this is, this is really. But, I mean, there, there are, and the clerk tells me, oh, yeah. And we have, you know, elderly people come in with a, a check for fifteen dollars, you know, and, and you've already written it off months before.
Exactly.
And she's like, no, this, this has already been written off.
Yeah, it's written off, we can give it back to them.
So, right.
If some, you know, if, if, say it came from an insurance company, then we can write it back on.
Yeah.
I mean, there's more, there's a lot to this, right? Like, there was a lot to, sometimes it's a matter of they need a signature from these people and they won't sign, and then the, and then the insurance will pay it. But they can't get them to sign. Or they've been in the hospital for two months and they haven't gotten the bill yet, so they, they're just getting the first bill on the third month possibly. The other thing is, I mean, we've talked about possibly, you know, anybody in town gets written off, but out of town, maybe not, cause there's a lot of people on. And I don't know that we have the capabilities, did she say we have the capabilities in determining that?
I, I think there is the, I think that can be tracked.
I think so too, right, because the body is route twenty-four accidents, right, that these are not residential customers necessarily. So there is, there is a way to customize this, um, but again. One of my disclaimers was, I'm not in the ambulance billing business and the town isn't in this business, right? But I just want you to see sort of the whole picture. There is a lot that goes into this. This is a lot of volume, a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, um, she says a lot of towns do the six months and then they go to collection, which we've never done. And I don't, I don't think any of us are interested in that, especially with the way things are with residents right now, right? Things are so hard to begin with and we don't wanna enter to that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just want you to, there's a lot more to it. It's not necessarily all just our residents.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of route twenty-four accidents and.
Generally, generally the motor vehicle accident is because the motor vehicle insurance is paying the bill. We do well on.
We get paid.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So it's just a matter of, I guess it's a matter of how many bills you're gonna send out before you write it off. It's a really big question.
That's, that's, that's the big question.
Yeah.
And that is, that's the issue.
So the, the past, past experience was working, right? We didn't have many complaints.
And, and, and I think it was, we, we used to send two. And then it was, at one point we went through this, I, I wanna think that Rob Jones.
So pre-me.
Rob Jones was on the board.
Yeah, it was pre-me then.
And of course, Robby has, he has a nice background, and. He, at that time, Rob said, I, I think we should go to three, and we went to three. And I don't, again, if, if the board decides, ah, we wanna, we wanna go for six and then see if we can get an extra juice for our squeeze there. But that's, that's your decision. Um.
Harry, what is it?
Maybe if you wanna bump it up to four or.
Yeah, once it, once it hits that number, it should be coming every month though, right?
Right, right.
Should be a monthly.
Well, as long as we request it monthly, which, which, which we wanna do.
Most, most, yeah. Okay, cause I'm thinking it's not gonna be quarterly, it's still gonna be monthly, it's just that it hasn't been six months yet, so we haven't gotten the first write-off from this company.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, cause it's a six-month lag.
Because their standard is six months, and so I said, it's, yeah, we decide, we need to have some.
So here's one of my things, and I, I don't have the numbers obviously, but how much have they collected for us? Because that was, that was July, right? You said we, yeah, we switched over in July. So we're already beyond that three-month time. I wonder how much they've collected outside from that three-to-six-month window. You know, and, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to hit you with something, I know you don't have the information on, so I'm just thinking if, if we have them doing something and they're not charging us more.
They're not charging more?
No, no.
So if they're not charging more and we're able to collect more revenue back in, I, it's a double-edged sword, cause I look at it from that side, but then I also think of it from. The compassion side, to your point that the little old lady who's thinking, how do I pay for this?
Yeah, should we, should we wait till next month once we get the first write-off? Just so we can compare and contrast and see, right, cause if it will be next month?
But in the meantime, I think people are still getting the extra bills.
Yeah, 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 additional bills, I get that.
So, especially during holidays, you're getting bills, you're, you're.
Yeah, and I get it, and I, 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 just I'm saying it's a double-edged sword, because then I also feel like to Chief's point, the person that's gonna pay it regardless of if that bill stopped coming, they're in their head and they're coming in with a bag of coins.
No, I do get it, it's tough, it's tough.
But, I mean, it, listen, it's worked for a long time with the three, so.
It has.
If you tell me we're gonna stick at three, I'm completely okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, man.
You guys wanted to stick with the three, cause I'm okay with it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we stay for three for now, and then we, we can look at some of the data maybe later on and, um, and change it. So I guess, so the motion we need to present today though is, is to.
Just to keep the policy the same, right?
I don't think the policy was kinda clear and that was the problem.
That's, that's part of the problem, the policy isn't clear.
So I think a lot of the, at least the fairness that we're gonna go through and then, and then write off and resume.
It's clear then, so. Right, they're, they're trying to set that policy tonight.
Sure, I understand.
And there's a lot more pieces to really get into, but sure, I'm really dig, digging into the demographics of the bills and who's not paying and why they're not paying. It's very hard to make this decision, and I don't feel like I have the time to sort of dig, he doesn't have the time to dig into his demographics.
Yeah.
No, no.
Maybe we can get the treasurer or somebody else to look at it, I don't know, um.
No, I, I, I'm.
But like I said, we're not in that kind of, this isn't our business of running expenses, other than.
No, we're this. Until.
Part that Harry takes care of.
The town has been surviving just fine.
Yeah, getting them to the hospital or wherever they need to go safely, as safely as we can possibly do it.
Alright, well, right, I wanna, like you, chief, I wanna provide a service-to-service product, right? Get them there safe, get them fixed, injured, repaired, whatever the case is, and then get these bills off their plate as well, right? It's a full circle. So if reducing from six to three is the way to go, back to where we were, I, I prefer doing that. That way, full circle's completed sooner than later.
Alright, so with that, so I want to change a motion. Um, that the policy on sending, um, ambulance bills is, is stopped at the three months and is, um, considered uncollected funds. And, uh, the motorcycle will, will go on abatements monthly.
Motion made.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Twist is looking good, getting ready for next month. We don't see you, have a great Christmas.
You too.
Yeah, Victoria, come on down. Sorry, I've been off. Long day. Alright, where are you? Jenna, Adam, Ben. Hey. Next, let's say it one way, always here, ready to go. Alright, so next we have a presentation on the Complete Streets Prior, prioritization, well, prioritization plan. Tom Twister. For me, Victoria?
Tom, I'm right behind you. Okay.
Yeah.
And we have, you have the tables as well.
Yeah.
Yes, um, so I'm Victoria, you know, I'm the letting technician for the town. Um, so what I'm presenting to you tonight is, um, presentation on the Complete Streets Funding Program that the town, um, has far out. Um, and I've been working on, uh, in coordination with environmental partners, our consulting and with the planning board. So Complete Streets, just to, I'm gonna give you a recap on what it is. The idea is to provide safe and accessible options for all travel modes, for people of all ages and abilities. Um, through using the Complete Streets strategies, you can improve, um, pedestrian vehicular environments and assist in closing. Critical gaps in transportation networks for existing and new roadway construction. Um, these, these improvements can include a range of things, it can be sidewalks, in addition to bicycle lanes, crossing opportunities. Accessible pedestrian signal, signal, sorry, modified vehicle travel lanes and curb extensions. So the way the funding program is structured, there's three tiers. So tier one is to complete a training, which I did, um, last year. And to approve a Complete Streets policy, which, um, you guys did do earlier this year. And then I had to upload it and get it approved by Massio team, which they did approve it, um, earlier this year. So we're on tier two, which is, uh, the Complete Streets prioritization plan. Um, so I applied for and received thirty-eight thousand dollars in technical assistance funds for environmental partners to help create this plan. Um, which we just finished and submitted to Mastop last week. The last tier, which we are, uh, not quite there yet, but will be, uh, coming in the spring, is the project funding, um, for construction. So you would pick a project from the approved prioritization plan, um, and apply for funding. Um, you can get up to five hundred thousand dollars every four fiscal years. And what, what's good about this program is that if you don't use the full five hundred, you can apply in the next grant round for whatever remainder of the amount is. Uh, so through our process of developing this prioritization plan, we initially held a meeting, um, with, uh, myself, Deb. Uh, environmental partners, police, fire and highway to discuss the process of developing the plan and some possible projects that we felt, uh, were important to include. Um, we then posted a link to, um, a map, which you can see on the screen, the map of Free Town. And the public could input their comments to say where they thought, uh, we needed a sidewalk connection, um, a dangerous intersection. Um, or dangerous hazards, things like that. So this actually shows, this map on the right shows all of the comments we received. As you can see, most of them were in a sownet. Um, so that's mostly where the prioritization plan, a lot of products are in a sownet, it's where we got a lot of the comment. Um, then after we had the public engagement tool up for about a month, um, we held another meeting to discuss those comments. And discuss the drafts that our environmental partners, um, came up with. Um, so after we have held that meeting with the same parties as our first one, um, environmental part, plan, the planning board reviewed the plan. Gave their comments about it, and then it was revised one more time. And then I did submit it to Mastop last, last week. So I'm gonna just go through the projects, um, but feel free to stop me, you know, if you want to get a comment or anything. Um, so project one is Gurney Road and Cheese Room improvements. So. This, this project is proposed, is proposing a five-foot-wide asphalt sidewalk. Uh, on the eastern side of Gurney Road and a roundabout in the middle, um. I don't know how much detail you guys want me to give, um, on these. Do you want me to get into the cost or just an overview of what the project is?
Yeah. Yeah, overview, yeah, but, so this is like, this is where Eric Gurney's sawmill, right?
Yeah.
And there's gonna be like a circle, there is, there's not a circling now.
No, it's a pole.
Like a pole, right, pole, yeah, yeah, this is sketchy, this makes sense, alright.
Yeah, it'll be. Yeah, okay. So the next product is the Washburn Road sidewalk. Um, a lot of these products that are in the prioritization plan are about connectivity. Connecting, you know, where there's, you know, critical gaps in transportation, so like missing sidewalk gaps, ADA curb ramps, um, things like that. So this is proposing a five-foot-wide asphalt sidewalk on the southern side of Washburn Road. Um, so this will connect to another proposed project that's on Gurney Road.
Can, can, can you, one, one take, if, I seen the total cost for the first one.
Oh, yeah, I know, three point three million.
Three point three, okay. Alright, perfect, this one's, yeah, I haven't written one actually, literally written one. Alright.
So North Main Street, South Main Street crossing improvements, um, we did get a few comments, um, from the public on, on this, um. Section of the, of the street, um, these cross, existing crossings may be improved and new crossings will be installed. This will improve pedestrian access to the missing sidewalk network in retail locations along South Main Street. So there's a plaza over there and, you know.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it needs an improvement, um. South Main Street sidewalk connection, so this is just showing that there's gaps, there's sidewalk in between those, um, the two. Boxed, um, where the proposed sidewalk is, and in between it, there's a sidewalk, so it's just missing, missing pieces, not continued.
And I see actually a lot of people, believe it or not, walking up that way.
They do.
From innovation, like way up there.
Ooh, that's gonna be more with the train, too.
I know, it's like coming from Paul River, they're working at Stopper Shop, and it's pretty dangerous.
Yeah, they, they, you have a lot of people walking up and down, walking around, a lot of people.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so this is a Mill, Mill Street sidewalk, again, a five-foot, a five-foot-wide asphalt sidewalk will be constructed on the eastern side of Mill Street. And Elm Street to Walnut Street and Ford Road. This will create a network and use on a village with existing sidewalks and proposed sidewalks on Walnut Street. So again, a couple of the products that are, there's one for Walnut Street, which is this next one, and all about kind of the connectivity and closing, um, in that way, yeah. So again, it's similar, um, this product, you will need a closed street edge system to be installed as a result of the sidewalk construction, so that does add to the cost of the project. Okay, so this is again, this is Elm Street, this is, um, for connectivity, um, five-foot-wide asphalt sidewalk, which is pretty much the standard size, um, that we chose for, for a lot of these projects. ADA compliant curb ramps and crossings will be constructed where applicable. And in RRFB, which is a, a rectangular rapid flushing beacon, that will be provided at the crossings. Okay, so this is a Pleasant Street sidewalk, again, this is the other, on North Main Street and on Water Street, there's a sidewalk, and this will just have one, so this will close that gap. And come on the sidewalk there for, um, residents and people watching. Okay, this is Hathaway Park, another connectivity, sidewalk connectivity, um, to continue it all the way to where the park is. So this is a townwide project, this would, uh, update and install, uh, ADA pedestrian curb ramps, uh, to meet their compliance. So this is sort of sporadic all over town, um, you might be able to see it better in your packets where the little dots are that shows where, um, the curb ramps are.
That's, yeah, that's an interesting one.
Mm-hmm.
So you get a lot, a lot of danger, right?
Yeah, yeah, that cost actually was pretty low compared to a lot of the other projects.
I was surprised when I looked and saw.
Yeah.
Kind of wide and it's all spread, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So this is four sidewalk construction townwide, um, so this one's more expensive than ADA curbs, there's more, more footage involved. Uh, approximately three thousand five hundred feet of sidewalk was proposed in this project to be, uh, reconstructed.
Are those the only locations that they proposed the projects? Pine Wood, Darling Way, Gray's Oak?
Yeah, uh, yes, that, yeah, we're zoomed in on this section of town. So the four corners intersection improvement, um, I know this has been, uh, really talked about a lot, um. With this intersection, this is, uh. We were, also, in addition to environmental partners looking at this intersection, we also recently received a technical memo from Surfed, our regional planning agency. That, uh, took a deeper dive into this intersection and they did go over possible scenarios, like a four-way stop, sign-like intersection. Uh, even possibly a mini roundabout, um, which is what EP is suggesting here. Um, for the mini roundabout, uh, further study would be needed to see if the weight of the heavier trucks can, can go over it, cause it would be fully amount to move mini roundabout. Um, but overall, um, Surfed suggested further study being done to, to see the possible solution for this intersection more, we, we need more.
I understand, that's interesting, I never thought about roundabout there, but.
Some land will be over.
So I think it would work well, the problem is we might have to do some land takings, if you see the layout, you know, it goes right over a house, it goes right, you know, so there's a lot, I think that's why we need more engineering to be done. Um, Victoria and I had that discussion today, which is gonna get some votes for that further engineering, and possibly bring that before town meeting to get funded. So that we can continue looking at this four-way intersection, cause we clearly know it's not safe.
Yeah, wha- whatever's happening now is not good, but I don't know what's right.
Permanent crossing guard.
So we'll, we'll, she'll continue to pursue this based on the recommendations from both the environmental partners and, um, Surfed, you know.
We got over a dozen comments just on this intersection, well, from the public comment tool.
Mm-hmm.
So we know that the public is really interested in seeing the solution here and, and something we can do about the intersection. So we'll definitely continue to, to work on that to find it.
Yeah.
So based on that, would, would you think we'll try and make that? Number one thing for us to go after?
I, 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 I think it is definitely an area of concern, but the reason why it's not number one. but the reason why it's not number one in here is because we need to look into it more before deciding that a mini roundabout with specifications is the way to go.
Yeah, we don't wanna jump to anything, right, I got you, that makes sense.
Yeah. There's a few, yeah, like, that's a, what is now, or what is going to be the veterinary building?
Right.
Like, it's cut off.
Yeah.
You don't need that extra window.
Yeah, well, this too, is also the house that's right there in the corner, that's literally right there in the corner as well, so so you, yeah, that's interesting.
It's not the park's right there, just in the corner, but.
And that's something that might need to be looked further into, like, if we could purchase that lot, could we swing the roundabout over just enough so that we wouldn't be taking land by in the, you know, because that's not easy and 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 it's not palatable, people won't like that, we don't wanna take people's land, I mean, that's a big issue.
Well, we have this one land right there, if I need to do that, goes, I'll throw it out there, move the bandstand to halfway park. There's your land, well.
I don't know, I think you still might run into the blue building, but these are things that the engineers need to look at and tell you.
Yeah, blue building. Right. Yeah.
Okay, this is what can be done, this is what can't be done, and then go from there. But I do think it's something that um Victoria and the planning board will continue to move forward, because it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not experts, so we'll let them.
No. Absolutely. It must be a state highway, state, what is it, is it called a highway, state road? I'm sure there's state grants out there that'll help us out with that, so.
That would actually be one of my other questions, is where are we tied down in way by the fact that it's a state road? As far as what we do, as far as with this stuff.
You need a a pool from the state, right, that, the state.
I think that it's our road, even though it's a state numbered route, Route seventy-nine, it's our road. I think that we, part of the issue when you get into mass D O T and mass D O T funding is you have to meet mass D O T standards, and they are much more stringent than any other standards. And sometimes we don't have the room, like, we're talking about the bridge on South Main Street and what we're gonna do with that. And one of the issues is it can't meet mass D O T standards, because it's not wide enough. I have nowhere to go with it to make it wider, and to make it wider is just, it's going to create, you know, a bigger issue. So sometimes you don't necessarily want the mass D O T funding, it depends on what it looks like and what's going to do.
Yeah, I didn't know if we needed to do something, if it's a state road to meet their requirements or bring it through them rather than us saying, okay, we're going to use this part.
I don't know that we do, because it's our road, even though it's a, it's a, uh, a never looped.
Yeah, that's interesting.
We can look further into that.
Yeah, no, it's not to be deal, and trust me, to your point, is sometimes we fall along along, I mean, and let us move forward where they cannot be tied down by the state, so I'm okay with that.
Chalk is all for sure.
The next project is the uh Narrows Road sidewalk, there were some public comments about this one, um and also from the planning board that would like to see this sidewalk connected to the the wall.
That makes a lot of sense to me, too.
So uh project fourteen, Memorial Drive and the First Road, shared use path. Um so the next two projects we're gonna uh get into are about connecting this uh central area of town with the shared use paths and sidewalks. Um so I actually, the Memorial Drive section, I did apply for the sacred school grant for for that section of the path. So um, oh, how much was that, like seven hundred and fifty thousand? Dollars to do Main Street?
Yep, mm-hmm.
That's how much the grant would be for, or?
Yeah, that's what she applied for, to get the Memorial Street down, Memorial Drive, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it is really expensive, um. Because of, this is the High Street sidewalk, um this is connecting it um from South Main Street to Payne Road, this would give access, so Payne Road um leads into the Freetown Boulevard State Forest, so this would give access right right into that. So this is um the other side of the previous project I just talked about, Chase Road Memorial Drive. This side is the Walnut Road with Shared Use Path, so this would create sort of that triangle um network of Shared Use Path. Shared Use Path can accommodate pedestrians and pedestrians.
Mm-hmm.
This is Lavidge uh Road, Shared Use Path, this is the last project on the list because it's very expensive and it didn't seem like it was um high on the list for the planning board or the uh when we held that meeting, um with other departments. Um but this would be like the same thing extending from the Fort and Chase Memorial Drive, Shared Use Path, it would be an extension um to its southern.
At general walk.
And um that's the last project on the list, we needed at least uh fifteen projects for the prioritization plan on each of the episodes.
Awesome. Well, this, I can tell a ton of artwork went into this, and I'm very, very impressed.
Yeah, you've done a great job.
Victoria, did the planning board rank them in the order that they like to do them, or it was random, random?
No, they didn't rank them, okay.
And you can win the grants, when you apply for the grant, you pick anyone you want.
You can pick anyone you want, yeah, okay.
Victoria, do you add more to it if needed to?
So the prioritization plan can be updated every three years. Um so I'm, I think when you, I'm not sure what adds to complete projects, you remove them and add more, I'm not quite sure how the process works, but it can be updated.
Great.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate that, it was awesome.
Yeah, it was, it was awesome, yeah.
And that's super exciting.
Yeah, this is like, I can see all the potential, all the possibilities here, it's really.
Well, one of the, and one of the things that we've talked about is it gives you information to apply for further grants.
Yes, exactly.
So it's so invaluable, tag, even if we can fund any of them, as the grants come through, we have a beginning point to say, okay, oh, we, we have a grant for that, like.
Yeah, the closer to shovel ready we can get, this is like the first step in getting us to it.
And that was all funded by a grant that.
Yeah.
Um Victoria.
That's awesome, yeah, that's great. Okay. Moving on, I think we're now at agenda item nine, which is uh license renewals, so we have a few of them, I'll go I'll do them, I'll have motions for the class two motor vehicles, and then I'll do a motion for the class three, and then the auctioneer, alright. So any questions on the list there? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the following class two motor vehicle licenses. Robert H. Alderson, D V A Bob's Motor Works, Craig J. Cabral, D V A Evolution Auto Sales, Michael J. Burns, and John F. Melo, D V A J M Auto Sales, Sam Man Corp, D V A Sam Man Auto Sales, Christopher J. Cabral, D V A C J Auto Sales, Armin R. Clamot, D V A Clum, um Clamot's Auto Sales, Chophead, uh Chop ahead Industries, Inc., D V A Chop ahead Custom Cycles, Basic Equipment Inc., Basic Used Cars and Trucking Equipment, Roger L. Denat, D V A Buller's Garage, uh PJ's Tire Inc., and Mark H. Bullock, AKA uh D V A Chipaway Auto Sales. Do I have that motion?
I will make that motion.
Alright, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, just before you go to class three, Teddy Auto Salvage, I filed a disclosure, that is my nephew, I have no vote in this, but I just wanna disclose that.
I appreciate that.
I filed a disclosure for the class.
So Teddy Auto Salvage, I mean, if you're a real detective, you might get it figured out.
But I did file it, this paper, I have no financial benefit, and I have no.
Okay. Perfect, yeah, for the record, Debbie did file the proper paperwork, alright, great.
Mr. Chairman, I have one adjustment on here.
Yep.
This name needs to also be added under D V here, is it, Donald Lendoza. This is still listed on the business license.
And. Vladimir.
I can leave it there.
Oh, yeah, I'll leave that there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna put your that name anyway. Okay, alright, so now I'm gonna move on, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the class three motor vehicle license. Jeffrey Repoda, D V A East Freetown Auto Salvage LLC, Joseph F. Costa the third, D V A J and T Auto Salvage, um Danielle Crispum, D V A uh Hometown Automotive, John Broden, D V A C S A Auto Parts, uh Big Wheel Truck Sales, Millen S. Westgate Junior, and Millen, Millen S. Westgate Junior, uh, sorry, Millen S. Westgate the third, D V A Westgate Auto, um Millis Industries, D V A Pick and Pull, D V A Fabrication Inc., uh, sorry, D B Fabricate Fabrication Inc., D V A Bugsy's, Bug Stevens Auto, um Freetown Auto, Donald F. Bedonza Junior, and Vladimir Criscup, D V A DM Auto Enterprise, and finally Petty Auto Salvage LLC, do I have that motion?
I will make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next is Auctioneer, so I'll entertain a motion to uh file the license, auctioneer license for Joseph F. Costa the third, D V A J and T Auto Salvage.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, I'll entertain a motion to um prove the mo- motor vehicle graveyard license to Millis Industries Inc., D V A Pick and Pull.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Agenda item ten is already done, so let me move over to selectmen votes for personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on agenda eleven, discussion, um doing a wage and personnel classification study. Well, like, just like it says, it's, you know, we have reports over, there's recent reports that said as far as what our personnel are paid and as far as what's compared to other towns, we're not, you know, at the same level, I guess, in a sense, that, I'll chime in um as needed, but this study would look into that, see how we can improve.
So, yeah, this is just sort of the next phase of what we started last year with the Collins study, when we came in and we had them look at our operations, sort of. The next step in that would be you have a wage and and uh personnel classification study. Um I didn't know if the selectmen were interested in that, I mean, there are other ways we can get some of this information, we can, we can look to other towns, because although we, I feel like we just finished the union uh contracts, they'll be coming up probably next year to start renegotiating, right, and you know, these studies take such a long time, and I'm not even sure we have the funding in place, but it might be something that we wanna look at, funding for next year. I just wanted to put it out there because it was recommended, um
Yeah.
to see what the board's uh take was on it. Um like I said, it was sort of the next level, if you will, with the Collins study.
I I think we should, I mean, I mean, I know there's not a vote here to specifically do it, right, it's just discussion, but I would say like, like, I I think it makes sense to keep this kind of, we should be doing this constant reeval, like evaluation, you know, and if we can get, if it's reasonable cost, right, if it's crazy money.
Right, I can put it out and see what it would cost and come back to the board with that. Because again, I don't know that we have the funding, I have some money funded for technical, you know, stuff, but I don't know that I have enough, and and I don't know that I'd wanna using on this right now.
Yeah.
I I ne- I never know what's gonna come up throughout the year that I might need my money for that. Um it was just sort of like, so the next step in that and um to look at how we're regrouping, we may wanna put this on hold right now while we're looking at um our whole feasibility studies and all of that, that's going on, we have a lot of stuff, but it unfortunately just takes so much time to get this information to back to you.
Yeah.
But even if we started now, you know, we're gonna eight, nine months, ten months before I have the information and report to get to the selectmen.
It's, I think sometimes like when they go for that, when they're trying to gather the information from us, right, it's gonna call, require us to kind of get everything together and really, like, I think that's just a good exercise to go through, right?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
So I also like the idea, because if we have this before the contract negotiation, right, yeah, like, I think that, I'm I'm guess, I'm sorry, I shouldn't like, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse by saying that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, it's.
You just brought it up, but like, having it just, you know, in the one that I did, right, we we really went through, we're trying to figure out other towns that were similar in size and how they worked, and to try and compare wages, right, for as far as contract negotiations. Having someone on the outside will probably make Luann happy, because it created a lot of work for her as well, right? We spent a lot of time trying to gather the correct information for that, and so we have an expert do it, if it's feasible, right? I mean, it's sensible to do.
Also, this past year as well, we've done, it seems like we're hiring every other week, right? Which is good, because we're we're getting some some new fresh talent. But in order to maintain them long term, you have to be competitive, not just neighboring towns, because we're all competing for the same pool of people, right? Um but we wanna make sure they stay here in Freetown, but also be able to make a, you know, be able to pay their bills and have a living wage and, you know, go home and have a certain pride of being, working for our town. So that that may require us to spend a couple of dollars here and there, so.
And you know, it may come down that it makes sense to reorganize the the talent, right? If we've we've, we've had this discussion in the past, the building inspector is the zoning enforcement officer, is the facilities maintenance guy. May, maybe it gets moved around because that's too much for one job, but hey, this,
Right, yeah.
but I don't have anybody that has extra time right now, but I have this employee that maybe could take on these extra responsibilities. It's also looking at that, like, who's got what, and maybe it needs to be shifted around, I can honestly tell you that everybody in that town hall works quite, quite hard, it's a long.
And certain people have certain passions for things, right, so giving them that focus, is that something I'm very big on, right?
I agree, that's how you keep talent, right?
Exactly, yeah, so retention of the talent, exactly, because it's, money matters, but there's also something about being happy with what you're doing, so uh, you know, we're all, by the end of the day, all driven by money.
Oh, sure.
Being, you know, the right person in the right seat obviously matters as well, so I'm all about this, I love, I love the idea of having someone from the outside look in.
I will get costs, see um where we're at with that, and then we'll have, we'll put it on the agenda, probably, we'll be able to get very much at this point.
Perfect.
We're quite busy.
Yeah, so one of the biggest takeaways from recent interviews is a lot of them are saying, oh, you look at their resumes, they're from all neighboring towns, we had someone travel like an hour and a half, two hours to do a building inspector interview. So it really is a small group of people that have municipality experience that we're looking for. So I I think being competitive is the way to go in the future, especially as labor costs are going up. So, yeah, good discussion, get us those numbers, and we'll go from there. Alright, um any further discussion? Yep, excellent. Item agenda twelve, discussion and vote, want to fill the second alternate space that is currently vacant due to declining of appointment for the COA Library Community Building Committee. So per our notes, uh Ms. Flornier, from the Flornier, declined her appointment. Um so we need to, we had other people in that pool that um also, was also, could have chosen from, but here's my train of thought, so we have two options, right? One, don't appoint anybody, leave it as is, or two, appoint someone from the original list that we had. That way, you know, people that signed up originally have the choice, primary choice, and if no one accepts that, then we go, then we put it back out there saying, hey, we're seeking another alternate. But looking at the makeup right now, and we have a meeting on Wednesday, um there's no heavy lifting right now, so everyone's committed to being at the meetings. My my two cents, you know, my only, my only two cents is, I think we should leave it as is.
Yeah, I I agree.
You know, it's looking at that.
If the point of note, right, we can add some later on.
Correct.
Alright, easy peasy.
So that's the case.
I'm good, thank you.
So uh I can motion to not fill the second alternate space that is currently vacant due to declining of appointment for the COA Library Community Building Committee.
Make that motion?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Item agenda thirteen, discussion and vote to amend the appointment of Shane Kelly from detective to patrolman, full-time effective seven one twenty twenty-two. This was a straight and easy one, it's, one from one position to another. Uh I entertain a motion to appoint Shane Kelly from detective to patrolman, full-time effective seven one twenty twenty-two.
Make that motion?
I will second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Discussion, item agenda fourteen, discussion and vote to select one selectman to present the board on the school district safety committee.
This seems great up your alley.
It does, it does, uh obviously, I will, I put myself into the running, but um I will, I will be more than happy to serve on this board, but, so.
Chair, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, do you, it has to be one person, right, because then we'll create a form if we have two people.
I was going to ask that question, because I knew that you would both be interested in this, because this is, this is the committee with the school with um, and Lakeville, um I mean, I I think we have just, we have different opinions, so I'm not sure the answer in terms of if you're both on it, whether we have to post that, is, because it can't be necessarily always a public hearing, it's going to be probably all.
Meetings, yeah, I would assume a lot of it to be, uh, a second session, I think.
Exactly, exactly, like, except for this is talking about school security. I can find out, um, I mean, I'm probably.
Yeah, you know, obviously, I take passion in it, as does Carlos, right, so I think, I mean, I, I'm, listen, if we're, if it has to be one or the other, I'm okay with being, am I, you know,
I don't see why.
We all have enough on our plates that, you know, I'm okay with asking, you know, but I do, I do take passion in it, so.
I agree, I mean, if.
Yeah, so how we go across now if we find others too, then, when, you know, do two?
Because I can always take neat notes, you, if I, if I, because I'm.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, well, exactly, I think that's a great idea, you know.
Alright, yeah. So, so yes.
So you, and then if we can have a second one go, then we'll go.
So I can, I can word it as, I'm the primary and you'd be the alternate?
Yeah, I don't even know if you would wanna do it that way, right?
I'll check in to see if we have two, I just feel like if you're two of a bigger committee, that we might not need to post it, and.
Well, from my understanding, it's gonna be one selectmen from us, right, um I believe both administrators, yourself and Ari are gonna be on it.
Yeah.
Two school committee members, superintendent Kara, and one selectmen from Lakeville.
And both police chiefs, right?
Both police chiefs.
And then I put in the miss, you know, then the back, because he's sort of our school, he's our supervisor, and I bet you the school, he's our supervisor from Lakeville, so
Oh, sure, absolutely. Yeah.
It's a fairly large group, you know, um I'll I'll look into it, I.
Yeah, like I said, alright, so just do it as you, if they come back and say, hey, you can have a second person, then we'll bring it back up. But so if I don't wanna have it be sticky with the alternative and whatever, so just, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, um okay, I entertain a motion to per- to select myself, Carlos Alos, um to represent the board of selectmen for Freetown to the, to the school district safety committee.
Make that motion?
I will second.
Aye.
That's right. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, that's important. Thank you, is that all, are you all done?
I believe.
Alright, so now we're just gonna sign, and then we'll adjourn. Thank you very much for letting me use your uh.
Is it on the blue tip on it?
Yeah.
Does it have the blue tip at the end? Those are hard to find these days.
Yeah.
No.
Uh, oh, you, oh, yes, fancy one. That's probably, this is four. So, and this one comes with this weird thing, right? But then I also see that one, which is, I wonder if that chart is one or?
Good one, same for there.
Let's test this, cause I have these everywhere now, those Micros these. Oh, yeah, those work. I don't see them.
Patriots are hot, huh?
Yeah, they have been being, they're according to their polls.
Yeah, thanks, but those work. I'm gonna switch that one.
I have a little bit, yeah, we're too. They speak in the board with two copies of each.
So you get a lot of questions.
I think it's six class dues, they did not run out.
True.
We do not have another meeting until January third, you know, and um.
Wow. We get to pin somebody.
We get all the holidays coming up, so it's gonna be a long time before we schedule that.
I know, I'm I'll miss everybody.
Well, we can schedule long meetings if.
Okay.
Like, careful what you wish for, it might be one that's.
You can start.
Stay right, right in between somewhere.
I just said, I don't know that it's going to be Christmas, so.
I know.
Well, if you look at it, right, so next weekend is Christmas, right?
Yeah.
Not this weekend, the the following weekend is Christmas.
Yes, yeah, true.
How's it going, how's it going with my shopping?
Yeah. I haven't had any shopping really. Well, I'm going to California, so I'll just uh just like my gift to Abby. Even though we didn't, I didn't like buy our flights or anything, but. Might even screw it all up, because these are out of order.
Not at all. No, no, we'll sort them all out on the clock.
Who's better than the law?
Who was that best? We're free, we schedule other than that, so. Cause one of them's really not a lot of business issues for me.
And I do fly in on the third, just to let you know, so I'm gonna be.
Well, Keith, it's okay, there's not a lot of um more stuff being done at that meeting, it's it's more of our company.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
How do you carry things on your cheek?
Yeah.
It was a military style, no battles. Everyone gets a a chance to push it in.
You might have an appointment.
I'm good.
Pointing at the moon, very, very little, I don't think there's a lot of stuff, so.
It's very little. We have plans, we have plans started at five thirty.
That's your last six o'clock.
So that by six, we would be ready for you to have.
Will you be there by five thirty?
Not if you can start at this section, but.
Which I would just like you.
Uh I'll be, uh I'll stay at red eye, but the problem is, I've I've been a meeting all day on on that day.
Uh. Oh, you're working.
I'm working, but so, it's like, I was, there's no question me being physically here.
Okay.
It's just like mentally, like I'm being.
All mentally.
Yeah, like I said, that one's, that that one will be fine.
Unless I fly to school, which is very, you know, cancel with those.
Well, there's everything you need, it's gonna be good.
Yeah. Probably got San Diego too, so it's not like Snowfield, but direct flight from San Diego.
Snow in here.
That's the.
I was just.
Was so pretty though, wasn't it?
It was, really.
Just when I don't have to move it, I love it, so.
Yeah.
Same as spillage of the Dawson with snow. I will say that.
Enjoy your weekend, my kids old enough, they don't wanna.
We're running around a little bar with a blast elf. Where's team, where's, where's team?
This is.
It'll, it'll plenty of adults there.
We had a blast when we had people's time.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Two years ago, and so last year, we had two copies, so that we could just pull it from the pile. Cause we actually had a couple of those in the last year.
Yeah, that was surprising.
Alright, you're fine.
Kind of something I needed for a second.
Come on, you're back here at eight A M.
For another meeting tomorrow?
We need the Comcast person for all the text, so.
We emailed that Comcast person, it's a no response. So, twice already.
So, wait, the movie set up was zoomed, will then be on a a real place, or be out here, in front of, yeah, in front of the store, to me, right?
It'll be out here. I don't know why, but that didn't take over the sun, cause I've had other meetings where the sun came from that evening, so it's kind of.
Yeah, that was weird.
Yeah, but then when you did like something, it did, that would, I unplugged my phone. It was charging, and then it dings, and I was like, so why are you not picking up everything else?
Yeah. Yeah.
So when you do get the new equipment, and that will be a lovely thing.
Hopefully, it'll get a new.
Yeah.
And you're making one.
Are we waiting on just the equipment for for the stuff?
No, we're working with.
I'm trying to get college house and. I think we are waiting.
I know, there's some supply chain stuff, too. I just don't wanna.
Like, who's doing that?
We're good.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.